Audman Wynn.
Here.
Audman Wilson.
Here.
Audman Holmes.
Here.
Audman Tindham.
Here.
Audman Grover.
Here.
Audman Rainey.
Here.
Audman Burris.
Here.
Audman Fisk.
Here.
Audman Braithwaite.
Here.
Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements. And I'm very sad to offer my condolences to the Lang family. Maxine Lang was an alderman here from nineteen seventy-one to seventy-nine. She served admirably and always maintained her interest in what was going on in city government. Six days after her death, her husband Chuck Lang died, and he was also a wonderful Evanstonian and will be missed, so condolences to the Lang family. That concludes the Mayor's Public Announcements. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. A few announcements. First of all, we'll be ready in two weeks to move the committee meetings to Room twenty-four oh four. So the television has been installed. We'll be able to be live in twenty-four oh four, so we'll start in two weeks. So AMPW and PND will be in twenty-four oh four. I don't believe we'll be able to do rules in there because of the size of the committee, and we'll talk with Alderman Holmes about her preference if she wishes to have Human Services in there as well. So we'll make those changes at the beginning of the month. Last Friday, I issued my proposed budget for 2014. That's available on our website, cityofevanston.org. We will have a presentation of the budget next Monday evening. We'll also have a presentation from the library on their proposed budget for 2014. And then the following Saturday, October the twenty-sixth, we will spend the morning taking a tour of CIP projects around Evanston. So we'll have more particulars to you over the next several days, but we'll have a bus that will leave here from the Civic Center, I'll take to several projects, and will be done between eleven-thirty and twelve. So those are the coming events for the budget over the next several days. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, could Mr. City Manager explain about the public involvement in the tours, if there is any?
Absolutely. We encourage members of the public to join us on the tour. The bus accommodates Mr. McCray, the interim director of Parks Recreation Community Services. Any guess on how big the bus is?
Between forty and fifty, I believe.
So if we have the mayor and nine council members and staff, we probably still have room for thirty members of the public to join us if they would like. We are going to ask probably next week for people to let us know if they're coming, so if we do have more than thirty people choose to join us, we'll need to make other arrangements for transportation, but our intention is to provide transport for all interested parties.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No communications this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Comment. I will call up the first four speakers. You each have three minutes. Janad Rizki, Madeline Ducrey, Susan Trishman, and Audrey Schroeder.
Janad Rizki, good evening. I will speak to the resolution to dissolve the township. To me, this is like the recent mess we had at Harley Clark. Councilmembers, the mayor, and the city manager claiming they will save us money, operating behind closed doors. City officials went down to Springfield to put legislation in place unique only to Evanston to close down the township. It was very interesting. What amuses me more, though, is how we have such a mess here in the city is operating. Councilmembers have the audacity to think they are going to run the township better. The recent presentation on city capital was very, very poor. Almost no numbers were presented to the public as to the situation of the capital, and it was omitted by staff. They have no numbers. The public should understand that we are in a bigger capital mess than we are with the pensions. The operation of this water utility I continue to talk about is totally mismanaged and has serious problems when you cannot even tell the public its profit or loss. Organizations which are out of control breed theft. Not so long ago, the city exposed the fact three percent of the employees were taking medical benefits they were not allowed. The most troubling thing, none were fired. What should trouble everyone, though, is that council members are the trustees of the township. If the township is in such a mess, who was entrusted to handle it? What I see here is the same pattern like Harley Clark. Some of you want to demolish the building since it's a mess and you didn't do the maintenance on it for years. This is similar to the township. You want to demolish it or destroy it because you can't run it, but you were really responsible to run it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Madeline Ducrey, resident of the Fifth Ward. I would like to just say that the referendum was introduced September the twenty-third, as most of you know. Tonight, the city council will more than likely vote individually and independently on what the majority of their constituent needs and wants are in their ward, and hopefully in the end decide what is needed for the city of Evanston as a whole. In saying this, I believe there should not be any hidden agendas, no coded language that trash or pit one group of people against another, like your taxes will go up, your taxes will be wasted on a few people, they need a job, they need to get a job, et cetera. No one, no one should have to beg or be denied by another human being for help. Basic survival skills, things like food, shelter, health care, and education when in need, especially in the United States of America. The independent voters and the dependent voters need to know the ins and outs of your plan. Before this city council vote on a referendum to dissolve the Evanston Township as we know it, how much money the city has paid so far? How much money would it cost the taxpayers? How much money would it cost to get this referendum on the ballot? Ten thousand, twenty-five thousand? What is the plan for the employees? How many people will it take to do this job? How many people you planning to help? Et cetera. How can you implement a program in the city and not let the taxpayer know ahead of time what is going on? We need to make an intelligent understanding. We need to understand this program before we vote on this, if this is what so many of you maybe choose to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Trishman, and I am here just to thank you all for the opportunity to work with the Economic Development Group to put together a grant package that I think is fair and will hopefully help the at-risk youth in Evanston. And I want to thank you for your continued support for Kurt's Cafe and the work that we're doing there and the students that we're helping day to day. And I'm just available if you have any questions later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Audrey Schroeder. Stephanie Spike. James Gottschalk. And Tom Kendall. Could you give your name and address when you come up? Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Spike, and I'm from Schaumburg, Illinois. I'm here to oppose the passage of ordinance eighty-dash-zero-zest-thirteen to ban electronic cigarettes. I'm not here to oppose banning the sale to minors. I'm perfectly fine with that, but to oppose banning electronic cigarettes to only areas where you can smoke. Many of you have received emails from people that use electronic cigarettes in the past few days with studies and links, links to studies and attachments of studies showing that vapor from electronic cigarettes is harmless. It is not toxic like smoke from cigarettes, and we do not feel that it is necessary for vaping, as we call it, to be only in areas where you can smoke. Pardon me, I'm not used to this and very nervous.
You're doing fine.
So I'm just here to show my support to people that use electronic cigarettes as a much healthier alternative to smoking and to oppose the passage of ordinance eighty-dash-zero-zest-thirteen. Thank you.
Thank you. James Gottschalk. And the last name is Beyon.
Hi, my name is Tom Kendall. I live at seven-twenty-four Malford here in Evanston. I'm also here to oppose the inclusion of electronic cigarettes in the Title III, Chapter fourteen, Cigarettes and Tobacco Products Ordinance. As has been pointed out, and I emailed everyone here, essentially, there are no risks whatsoever to people who are vaping, or people who are near vapors. There's just no transmission or very little transmission of anything except water vapor, which is what you see when a vapor exhales after taking a drag on an electronic cigarette, and you might catch a whiff of whatever the flavoring is in there. As far as a tobacco harm reduction device, it seems to be about the best one that's around. It's been the most successful in terms of getting people off cigarettes, and again, there's just simply, you know, I just don't understand why we would be considering such an ordinance, especially since nowhere else has it. I would like to emphasize also that no responsible vapor or vapor vending products would ever want to sell to someone who's a minor. Virtually every website has, you have to go through an age check to even get on the website, and of course, the vendors are totally responsible about this sort of thing, or at least as much as, you know, can happen. Another thing I'd like to bring up is the fact that since no other suburb or the city of Chicago is considering such a ban, this would have an adverse effect ultimately on the business in Evanston and the amount of taxes that we all, that this city government needs to survive. Specifically, by demanding that any licensing of various vendors who do not already sell tobacco products, demanding a fee from them, and then putting them through the wringer regulation-wise, will just simply encourage them not to sell these devices. What you're doing is then foregoing sales tax. If that's of interest to you, fine. Another problem is that restaurants, bars, not that there are that many bars in Evanston, hotels, motels, so on and so forth, will be very adversely affected. Whenever I go down into the near north of Chicago, for instance, I see probably fifteen to twenty percent of the people in restaurants and bars there vaping. Now, you know, all of us vapors are basically ex-smokers.
I do need you to wrap up.
Okay, I will. The problem is that we all are very sensitive to where we are not wanted. If you want to drive restaurant business out of Evanston, hotel, motel bills, and so on and so forth, and forego the taxes, that's up to you, but I would strongly encourage you to vote against this proposed ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's James Gottschalk. Excuse me. My address is nine-three-two-two Drake Avenue, and I'm here to oppose the ban on electronic cigarettes as well. I'm not in opposition to the ban on sales to minors because I think that is, you know, without question is definitely something that should be done, but I think a complete ban on electronic cigarettes without there being really any conclusive research that it has any negative health impact on individuals who use the products nor innocent bystanders, I think that's a little preemptive, and my reasoning behind that really falls with... Last year, my father succumbed to... My father passed due to complications from eczema and long-term smoking. And if he were able to use a product like electronic cigarettes and was able to, you know, have a longer lifespan, to have a life with, you know, far fewer negative health impacts on it, and to not be harnessed to an oxygen tank, I think that it goes without question that for us to restrict other individuals from having access to a product like that is very wrong. All of the research that has been done on this product has shown, and most of the research has been done by leading researchers in the field of tobacco, like Dr. Michael Siegel from Boston University. I'm sure you guys have read a lot of the research. He is one of the big proponents of electronic cigarettes, and it's ironic because he is a huge anti-tobacco proponent, so... And he's also, you know, done many, many studies about teenage and underage drinking as well, and for him to throw his support behind a product such as this, that says enough about it to me that it needs more research before we should start to restrict it based upon no evidence whatsoever. I really think that it's going to take some time to develop more long-term studies, but all of the long-term studies that have been done, such as the one through Duxell University recently, have shown conclusively that there's no negative impacts on, you know, individuals due to, I guess, second-hand vapor. And overall, you know, the positive impact that it can have as far as at least not taking in, you know, burning tobacco, I think that in and of itself is a reason to, you know, not allow a ban like this to take place at this point in time. We know what's in cigarettes. We know the negative health impacts of using those products, especially on a long-term basis, and we all know, you know, stories of individuals that we've been close to, family members, friends, coworkers, who've suffered those, you know, ill effects of them. And if they can use a product like this and successfully quit smoking cigarettes, I don't think there's any question that we should allow that to take place, and for us to, you know, just impose a ban based upon really little to no evidence, I just really can't understand how that could take place. You have all the research. I urge you to read through it, and, you know, I've said all I can about it, but I really urge you to think through this decision a little bit more so before you act on a complete and total ban.
Thank you. Michael Cozy, seventy-one, forty-two. I'll call, but I'm going to go through everybody who signed up on time first.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Michael Cozy, seventy-one, forty-two, North Keeler, Lincolnwood. And the reason I'm here today, the reason I made the effort to come here, is because Evanston is home to me. I was educated partially in Evanston. Actually, I designed and installed the computer network for your grammar schools in the year two thousand and one. This is one of the most open and progressive and interesting communities I've always been, I've ever been exposed to, where we have people and diversity. That makes me happy, and that's why I'm here. I represent an organization called CASA, Consumer Advocates for Smoke-Free Alternatives Association. Part of the reason that we're here talking to you is, has to do with some of the things that you heard from other people that were using electronic cigarettes. I want to keep this short. It's been a while since I stood in front of people and talked. It's been about ten years. After I left Apple Computer, there was no longer any presentation, so I'm standing in front of you shaking. This is how important this is to me. An electronic cigarette, according to our epidemiologists on the board of our organization, is ten to a hundred times safer than a tobacco cigarette. And I myself quit using tobacco cigarettes in 2010. The day that I had my last one was June fifth, 2010. This was after smoking since the age of fourteen. And I would add, probably walking through those elementary schools unfortunately smelling like a tobacco plant. If you relegate electronic cigarettes in the same classification as a tobacco cigarette, there's a couple of things that are happening. One, you're taking away the motivation of the people who want to get off of tobacco, and it's very difficult. Even with an electronic cigarette, it's difficult, because a lot of people who quit are like, "Oh, I can use this in more areas so I don't have to be as uncomfortable all the time." That's one motivation. But the other thing is, is if you relegate them to smokers, the second-hand smoke, the tobacco smoke they're trying to get away from, you're forcing them to endure in a public situation, and I don't think that's right. Now, not using an electronic cigarette, I have to tell you, is probably better than using an electronic cigarette. I'm not here to tell you that electronic cigarette is a vitamin. But tobacco is an insidiously addictive substance. Some people, just like a heroin addict that might use methadone, I believe that's what they use, might use an electronic cigarette in the same way.
I do need to wrap up.
Yes, ma'am. That being said, I'm here, sometimes I don't come to these around the state because I don't think I'd be heard. I'm here because I think the people here would hear me. I know you folks, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Janad Rizki, Angela Hansen, Wanda Reed, and Barbara James.
I'm going to speak on a non-agenda topic. I noticed today the library board wants a thirty-nine percent tax increase to hire seven new employees and for other expenses. Can council members explain to me who is responsible for the main library building's maintenance and repair? Will future taxpayers again face another Harley Clark? Given we have problems running our Capitol, I can't believe the library board could do much better. I would like to understand what agreement is in place to maintain the building. Well, is there another contract such as Harley Clark? It's my understanding the city owns the building, but now the library board may be maintaining it. I have walked around the main library noticing really problems with the exterior skin of the building. There's an amount of water damage spalling and stone and other issues with the building. I'd like to know really who is responsible. Of course, I know who's responsible. The taxpayers in the end will pay for this. But why are we hiring all these employees again and not maintaining a building? It's a pattern here. The city has done the same thing. It's over-hired employees and not maintain the Capitol and makes excuses that things aren't being maintained. In twenty years from now, will I be coming to these meetings, listening to aldermen who are probably in diapers, telling me we're going to tear down the library building because we didn't maintain it? That's probably what I'll hear. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Agne Hansen. I live at twenty-seventeen Seward Street in Evanston, and good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Clerk, and City Manager. I have worn many hats, and I've taken a little hiatus from coming to council meetings, but I'm back, and this time wearing my hat as Chair of Bike the Ridge. This year, we celebrated our sixth annual Bike the Ridge on September twenty-ninth, and I'm coming today just to tell you how wonderful it was, or in the words of Alderman Rainey, how fabulous it was. The week leading up to Bike the Ridge, Tom Janetsky was calling me, wanting to talk about a weather contingency plan because that weather was predicting sixty to seventy percent chance of rain, and for those of you who are out there, you know that was not true. I mean, we were in the seventies, sunny. It was just beautiful, and it really was, the first time at Bike the Ridge, I make it a point of riding my bike up and down a few times, and it was just throngs of bicycles up and down. Usually, it's kind of in waves, but north and south, there were tons of bicyclists, and so much positive feedback at the Ridgeville Park District where there's a main hub of how many people in Evanston love Bike the Ridge and that it's their favorite event. So I just wanted to take this time to say thank you to a few people. First of all, all of you for your one-hundred percent support, because without it, we couldn't do Bike the Ridge every year, and I wanted to name a couple of people on city staff. Now, you know, to the public out there, although I am Chair of Bike the Ridge, I really am just someone that coordinates between city staff and the sponsors and the vendors that come to Bike the Ridge. The city staff has this Bike the Ridge as a well-oiled machine. Somebody's talking back there on their phone. It truly is a well-oiled machine in terms of shutting down Ridge Avenue for four hours, really almost five, before and after, on a Sunday morning. It takes a lot of work, and I just wanted to publicly thank a few people. Although he is retired, Gainer has always made it a very smoothless thing for me in terms of talking with city staff and the Special Events Committee, so I wanted to thank Doug, Bob Dornaker, Martha Logan, who every year helps me update all the PR materials through the city of Evanston, Tom Twig. Without them, our streets, the street wouldn't be closed down. Tom Janetsky. This year, Sergeant Tracy Williams with the Traffic Patrol. Carl Knieva, who comes every year in the mornings. I make sure all the vendors that are distributing or selling food are all up to code. The Evanston Police Department, all the police officers that come out and man those intersections, all the parking enforcement officers that do the same, but most certainly, the Certified Emergency Response Team, the CERT team as we all know them, they're all volunteers. They all volunteer their time and sit there for five hours making sure traffic does not come out onto Ridge, so I wanted to thank them. You have a picture of the Evanston Township High School junior varsity cheerleaders who were there at, a lot of them were there at seven AM, seven-thirty AM, to man intersections for them, because although we do have a lot of volunteers, we do have intersections that still need to be covered. And I wanted to thank a couple of our sponsors. Our main ones, Regional Park District, Brian Rosinski and Mike Miro, President St. Francis Hospital, Weiner and Still Champion, who donates a meal coupon to all our volunteers, Hummingbird Kitchen, Crave, who is our local vendor on the beachfronts, Evanston Local Fire Union, seven forty-two. This year, they gave out free bicycle lights all the years past. They gave out bicycle helmets. The YMCA, Turn, when they started, then ten twenty-seven, and now Wheel and Brackets. The Bike Doc, he's the guy who has the truck that fixes all the bicycles out there. Bike and Roll Chicago, who donates every year Alderman Rainey's bicycle, which is the, I'm sure you've all seen it. Sometimes it takes four people to help turn the wheels. The city manager knows all about that. And then just a couple others. Dunkin' Donuts on Oakden provides donuts and coffee in the morning for all our volunteers. Baby Cakes, a food truck that comes out. Whole Foods South, the Pony Shop, who this year gave out free bicycle bells to whoever wanted them until they ran out. The recyclery, Heaven Meets Earth Yoga, who this year did family yoga classes, free of charge to anyone who wanted to do family yoga or otherwise. Northwestern University Health Systems, who I think one year did hot chocolate and this year did lemonade. Oakden PTA, and then there was a hospitality table by Candace Hill, an eighth ward resident at Howard. at Howard Street. So Bike the Ridge has really become, over the six years, a black party and a festival. And it really is also, it's become a showcase for city departments, because many city departments come and interact with all the residents in Evanston. So thank you very much. And next year, if anyone wants to come to Bike the Ridge, you can contact me. Most people are welcome to have a table, or come and be a sponsor, but we just want to make sure we know who you are and put you in the right place. And so I can be reached at angina.hansen@comcast.net. And my T-shirt, that Alderman Rainey, I'll show the crowd if anybody loves Bike the Ridge. There's a limited supply of T-shirts, and you could, they're still for sale. You can buy them either through contacting me, or contacting the Ridgeville Park District at 847-869-5640. And one big city department that really works hard out there, I mean, everybody works hard, is the Water Department. Kevin Lucas and Dan, and I'm sorry, Dan's last name, I can't remember, but I'm sure you know all of them, giving out free water bottles, and the water station that's really used by everybody at Bike the Ridge. So thank you very much, and thank you for the time, Mayor.
Thank you, Angela. It was a wonderful day. Wanda, then Barbara, then Linda.
Hi, everybody. I hope everybody's doing good. I am.[698.32][698.32](Laughter) You know, I bought flowers because there's a person here that I want to give these flowers to, that supported me at Everson Township High School. I was sitting at home, and I was going through some papers, and I found some pictures, and I found a card. And then I started remembering, going back for, I think it's about 20 some odd years. And I thought about it, and I said, you know, this lady supported me. She would come in the back door, see about me, always gave me support because she knew that I had a very hard job. I worked at Everson Township High School. I was security first. And then they put me in inside suspension. It was very hard. But they felt that I could do it, and I did the best that I could. I still go back right now, and I get free time. I don't believe in failure. There's no such word. It's what you choose to do. But I want to present this bouquet to someone that made a difference in my life. Ms. Tisdale, would you come here?[782.19][782.19](Applause) You know, no one knew that you were coming to see me, but you would come in that back door, and you would see me if I was okay. And I want to let you know that I appreciate everything that you did for me. My mama always told me, "Don't forget the bridge that bring you over." And I haven't forgot you.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, City Manager, members of the City Council, my name is Barbara James, and I'm once again here on behalf of No Park Sale. I am here tonight to once again announce No Park Sale's follow-up community meeting, following our very, very successful community meeting on September 18th. And our follow-up meeting will be on Wednesday, October 23rd, 7:00 PM, in Room 2404 here at the Civic Center. The focus of this meeting, now that the city and the Art Center are in the process of negotiating a lease, will be on developing ways to protect our lakefront from future Harley-Clarks. We urge everyone who's interested in the quality of life along our lakefront to join us. So I hope everyone will come, all of you, and I know there is an important meeting that night, I recognize that, but everyone in Evanston. And if she needs it, I cede any of my extra time to Linda Damaschek.
Good evening. I'm representing No Park Sale. Oh.[934.13][934.13](Laughter) Okay.
Linda, could we have your name and address?
Oh, sure. Linda Damaschek, 1318 Judson. No Park Sale represents the interests of thousands of Evanston residents who are concerned about maintaining the public parkland at Lighthouse Landing, public access to its parks and beaches, and the retention of the Harley-Clark Mansion for public use. To these ends, we have a vested interest in the framework of the lease for the Harley-Clark Mansion, currently being negotiated between the city and the Evanston Art Center. Although the parties will negotiate the specifics of the lease, we are proposing some parameters for the lease that should be in place to ensure that the long-term use of this property will be for the public benefit. We believe that the Harley-Clark Mansion should be kept in the public domain in perpetuity. The lease should have the following attributes. Number one, land use. It should clarify that the lease is only for the building, and that the land under the building is public parkland in perpetuity, owned by the city of Evanston for the benefit of its residents. Number two, sublet policy. The lease should state explicitly that the lesssee may not sublet any portion of the property for anything other than public uses. Any proposed sublet will require city consent preceded by public notice and opportunity for public comment. Number three, public notification. The lease should provide for a public notification process if either party decides to terminate the lease for any reason. Should this occur, the public should be notified via city of Evanston press release, an agenda item before City Council, and other appropriate city committees, as well as electronic notification mailing lists. Number four, capital improvements. The lease should clearly identify which party will be responsible for what capital improvement expenditures, by the nature of work or dollar amounts, and the anticipated timelines for these capital improvements. Number five, annual notification. The lease should stipulate that the city and the lesssee should be required to report the nature and extent of their expenditures on capital improvements annually to the City Council. Thank you very much in advance for taking these important public concerns into account, and including these parameters when negotiating the lease terms for the Harley-Clark Mansion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brandon Hammond.
Sorry. I would like-
Sorry, Brandon.
Sorry. I would like to have this put into the public record, and so I have copies for everybody, and I'll give it to the city clerk.
That's fine. Brandon. Tom Kendall, you already spoke on this cigarette ban, so I'm assuming you don't want to again. And Rodney Contorti after Brandon.
Good evening. Oh, wow. Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to use a mic. I'm really loud.
Sure, you're on television.
Oh, do I have to? Okay. I'm just not used to talking into a mic, but thank you. So you've heard my fellow vapors in their plea to shoot down this e-cigarette, excuse me, e-cigarette ban. I'm not going to bore you with like studies and details. I'm going to tell you about me and how it's affected myself. So I was a smoker for eight years in high school and college, and it was awful. It's a terrible vice, and I don't recommend anyone to pick up smoking. But my point is, it had such a grip on my life that it was incredibly hard to actually break that habit. And I actually found a break in e-cigarettes. So there was a time in college where it was either buy a pack of cigarettes, or buy a meal. And it's really sad when you think about that, that those are your two choices. And of course, I chose cigarettes. I mean, let's be real. But that's the point in my life where I was like, that's absolutely disgusting. What am I doing? So then I got this job. I work in the North Shore, so I didn't tell you my address. I'm from Oak Park, but I work in Northbrook, and I work for an electronic cigarette company. The owner was kind enough to give me a job out of college, and I looked at him like, okay, battery and plastic, how is this supposed to help me? Little did I know, I was extremely naive, and I thank that man to this day for introducing me to electronic cigarettes. I wake up, I breathe better. I have energy again. I'm a big guy, as you all can see. So it's really hard to get this body mobile. Thank you. Electronic cigarettes helped me do that. Apparently, people are taking pictures as well. I'm not here to make jokes, really. I've had two heart surgeries. I know, your jaw dropped. It's awful. I'm 23 years old, and I've had two heart surgeries. And I spoke to my cardiologist, and he urged me to quit tobacco, and I was like, no, because it's extremely hard and addicting. So when I told him that, hey, you know, I'm done, no more, his jaw dropped, and his face lit up with elation, because after eight years of working with me, and after two heart surgeries, he's like, you finally did it. You quit. You're done with tobacco. And that's the one thing that I can't, I can't take away from electronic cigarettes. So like I said, I won't bore you with details or anything like that, but when you go to vote, just remember, there's 23-year-olds like me who've had two heart surgeries, and this has saved my life. So thank you, guys, and you guys have a great evening.
We're on non-agenda.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rodney Contorti. I'm at 2939 West Byron in Chicago, also a property owner in Evanston, too. I conduct a lot of business in and out around Evanston. I would, and I'm speaking in regards to ordinance 80-0-13, which everybody knows is electronic cigarette. As you heard, all my fellow vapors, you know, come united. I just would hate, hate to think that Evanston would be the first in this state to be banning this. It would be appalling, seeing that I was also educated in Evanston, too, and the diversity is what brings me back. I spent a lot of time in Evanston, so I would just hate to think what that would mean. That would mean that if I wanted to vape, I would be stuck going, standing next to people who I've distanced myself so far from smokers, that I would have to go back and start inhaling those fumes again, as far as the secondhand smoke. As far as the underage, we, everybody in the community that I know of is so-called no minors, period, the end, no ifs, ands, or buts. Age verification is always mandatory. I have numerous friends, one friend in Ohio has six stores, he's opening six, he requires ID. I have a gentleman that has two stores in Illinois. He requires ID. I have another gentleman that has another store. He requires ID. So we are very diligent in our attempts to self-regulate ourselves, as that goes. If you want to pass age verification, or age ban minors, no selling electronic cigarettes to minors, God bless you, and I support that 2,000%. I think everybody behind me would say the same. But if you want to segregate and put us in the same box as smokers, I ask you not to. There's so many stories. I, myself personally, have been vaping for six years. Six years. I feel better. I had a CPAD. I don't use that as much. My breathing is better. My, Brock, all my, my doctor would even tell you. I just don't want to go into all these details, but I just ask you not to put me back in that box, especially when I have to spend time in Evanston, and enjoy spending time in Evanston. I just don't want to be put back in that box. That's basically all I'm saying, going to say. Okay? Thank you very much for your attention.
I'm sorry, I'm running late. I wanted to know if I could say something about the cigarette cigarettes also?
If you may, get very quick. We're out of time for public comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Catherine Logan. I started smoking cigarettes, oh, I live at 835 Ridge. I started smoking cigarettes when they were 55 cents a pack. Now, I am 55 years old, and I also vape. I'm also a friend of Brandon's and the whole staff of Vapor for Life. And I just want to say, my body is better, my attitude is better, my clothes don't smell, my hair doesn't smell, the house doesn't smell. My son lets me vape in his truck, which he never let me vape, smoke cigarettes in his car, any of them. I couldn't even smoke cigarettes in the house. So it's done, it's made a lot of difference in my life, and if you put us, like Brandon said, in a box with other people that are smoking, it'll be bad, because myself, I've also had a mild heart attack from smoking cigarettes, and it's just not, I prefer to vape. And it's a good thing. It's a blessing, and I'm 100% behind it, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.[1545.41][1545.41](Applause) Bonnie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman. I just want to give you an update on the, Bonnie Wilson, Evanston Township Assessor, and I want to give you an update on my office. In September, my office helped seven taxpayers receive corrections of property tax bills for missed exemptions totaling $7,134. And this brings the total dollar amount returned to 107 taxpayers since April 1st to $167,478. Corrections can still be made as far back as the 2009 taxes that were paid in 2010. If you think you have missed an exemption or never applied for an exemption, please call our office for more information. This especially applies to senior and homeowner's exemptions. I also want to announce that the Evanston Township Assessor's Office and the Township General Assistance Office is now located in the Civic Center at 2100 Ridge. Our new phone number is 847-448-8168. That's 847-448-8168. And we are open Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 5:00. We are now at a more convenient location next to the city clerk's office, and I welcome all of you to come and say hi. If you don't even need our services, just come in, and so you know where we are when you do need us. You can stop by, we are next to the city clerk's office. I also want to thank Valerie Weidman from the Evanston Township General Assistance Office, Valerie's over there, who really helped make this transition very, goes very, very smoothly. I also want to thank the city staff, from the IT Department, to the Facilities Department, to all the other departments that helped us move. It went very smoothly, and now we have two beautiful new offices. But I want to say one more thing, and you know what I'm going to say, that I want to make it perfectly clear that I do not support ordinance 1050113 to have a referendum to dissolve Evanston Township. Since I have been assessor, I have improved this office a lot. We have saved the taxpayers thousands and thousands of dollars, and it is important that I want to continue my job to be a taxpayer advocate for the taxpayers of Evanston. I want to put it on record that I do not support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now that really does conclude Citizen Comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I take a moment of personal privilege?
Of course.
Thank you. We know that you always do good things, but I would just like to say that the reason I clapped when you received your flowers was because of Wanda Reed, and that she reached out with her thoughtfulness and demonstrated a random act of kindness on a Monday night, when we're not used to hearing that, just really warmed my heart, and I think the rest of the council feels the same way.
Well, Wanda Reed is someone I've always supported, because she's always been an inspiration to me, as she was again tonight.
And you always went in the back door, because when dealing with her, you knew your place.
That's right.[1760.91][1760.91](Laughter)
Anyway, thank you, Wanda Reed. You're really somebody that people should look up to.
And people do.
The consent agenda. Madam Mayor, the consent agenda is as follows. We ask the council approval of the meeting minutes from September 23rd and from September 30th. Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we recommend your approval of the payroll through September 22nd, $2,730,806. of the payroll through September 22nd, $2,730,806 and 44 cents. The bills through October 15, $5,014,765 and 58 cents. Credit card activity through August 31st, $145,450 and 19 cents. We ask your approval of the purchase of streetlight units from El Cast Lighting for 2013 Safer Neighborhood Area Project, you know that as SNAP, in the amount of $58,845 and 57 cents. This will increase the wattage of the Talmage light, streetlights from 85 to 165 watts on designated blocks that the council members and police department will identify in certain, to certain neighborhoods. This is through the CDBG account. We ask your approval of a grant agreement with the youth organization Umbrella Y O U to provide subcontract services for outreach programs for year two from October 1 through 2013 until September 30, 2014, in the amount of $37,432. We ask your approval for free holiday parking in the city's three downtown self-park garages and Lot 60 located at 1234 Chicago Avenue from, this will be weekdays between 5:00 PM and midnight, and all day on Saturday beginning Thursday, November 28 through Saturday, January 4, 2014. We ask your approval to introduce ordinance 78-013 regarding commercial signs on sidewalks. This amends City Code Section 726E. For introduction also is ordinance 92-013, which amends the City Code to increase the fines for snow emergency parking violations. I should probably take this off.
That's introduction.
Okay, all right. The increase in fines for snow emergency parking violations will be $40 to $55 to match those of snow route parking ban and the snow relocation fine will increase from $105 to $150. For introduction also is 106-013, amending Title VII of the City Code regarding clearance of snow and ice from sidewalks and other related matters. We also request approval for introduction for ordinance 11-110-13, amending the City Code to restrict parking on Austin Street from Elmwood Avenue to Sherman Avenue, on the south side of Austin, from Elmwood Avenue to Sherman. Also for introduction is ordinance 108-013, creating a liquor license classification M. This will create and take effect, this will take effect on January 1, 2014. In grape company, the prospective licensee indicated that the business would receive orders for wine and then provide delivery of wine to the customer at home. For introduction also is ordinance 111-013, amending the City Code Title IV Building Regulations for adopting the 2011/12 model codes by reference with certain amendments. This is a nationally recognized building regulations designed for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. For introduction also is ordinance 114-013. This is the 2013B general obligation bond issue of $30 million in GO bonds to be used to refund 2004, 2005 GO bonds. The issuance will reduce the interest costs on the debt as well as reduce outstanding bonds due and payable by the city, resulting in an estimated debt service saving between $2.5 and $3 and $3.25 million over the remaining life of the bonds. We ask your approval for ordinance 97-013, the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment owned by the city through public auction. The vehicles are presently out of service. For action also is ordinance 102-102-013, decrease in Class B liquor license due to the change in ownership of Flat Top Grill 707 Church Street. Do you have? 707 Church Street in Evanston. A15, we ask your approval of ordinance 103-013, increase in Class B liquor license due to a change in ownership of Flat Top Grill 707 Church Street. That's for action. Also for action is ordinance 90-013, propose revisions to Title III, Chapter IV liquor control regulations. The mayor and local liquor commission and administration of Public Works recommend adoption. On your addendum, agenda addendum is ordinance 11, I mean 101, I'm sorry, 101-013, decreasing the number of Class C liquor licenses due to the lapse of license for La Pensiero Restaurant at 1566 Oak. This is for introduction. Also for introduction is A18, ordinance 104-013, amending the City Code Title III, Chapter IV to permit issuance of a Class B liquor license to Coffee House Holdings at 1734 Sherman Avenue. This is for introduction. Madam Mayor, may I have another privilege? Alderman Fisk, is this to be suspended, rule suspended? Pardon me? Oh, okay. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I therefore also move A18, ordinance 104-013, to suspend the Under Planning and Development, the committee met this evening and we recommend introduction of ordinance 112-013, granting a special use for a private educational institution at 622 Davis Street. Beacon Academy and Montessori High School will be the occupant.
Alderman, that one's off?
It's off the agenda, off the consent agenda?
For introduction. I'll introduce, I'll both introduce.
Okay. All right, never mind.
You want to suspend the rule? No, but.
Leave it on, consent to.
No problem. Under Human Services, approval of the Township of Evanston September 2013 bills, with the exception of the Sun Times Media Bill of $17,640, the committee, the Human Services Committee is recommending approval of $173,136 and 1 cent. H2, approval of Lakefront Special Use Policy is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Approval, next, your approval is requested. Human Services and Community Development Block Grant Committee recommend you, the city manager, execute an agreement between the City of Evanston and James B Moran Center for Youth Advocacy to provide legal services for not less than 15 Evanston residents to secure certificates of rehab, rehabilitation in an amount not to exceed $50,000. H4, the Human Services Committee, Noyes Tenants Association, and the city staff recommend the city council authorize the manager to execute a short-term leases at Noyes Cultural Arts Center. This is for action. H5 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. H6 is ordinance 105-013 is for action but is off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. The Economic Development Committee met and recommend approval of Resolution 54R13, authorizing the manager to execute a grant agreement with Kurt's Cafe, 2922 Central Street for $21,000 to provide training for a minimum of seven Evanston residents from the disconnected unemployed and/or formerly incarcerated young adult population. We request your approval of funding for Chapter I Evanston's Entrepreneurship Resource Center for the amount of $9,900. This will be given to the Evanston Public Library to support the creation of a Chapter I. The Rules Committee met and recommend approval of, I'm gonna take this off because I'm not sure of the correct hours, we'll deal with this later. Under Appointments, Madam Mayor has recommended four appointments. Under the Arts Council, Sergio Deloraes, the Economic Development Committee, Jean-Marie Seriant, Housing and Homelessness Commission, Heather Harker and Geraldine Palmer, MWEB Development Committee, Bill Smith, Parks and Recreation Board, Jeffrey Brown, John Bryan, Sign Review and Appeals Board, Paula Bodnar Schmidt, Parks and Recreation, Hector Garcia, and for reappointment to the Human Relations Commission, Kenneth Rogers. Madam Mayor, that completes the consent agenda and I move approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. What was that? Burris? Burris? Oh. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite. Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Rainey, do you have anything in Administration and Public Works?
Trying to figure that out, I don't think so. No.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Win. A18? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, you have the rules suspended for A18. The addendum?
Oh, dear, right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for pointing that out. Madam Mayor, ordinance 104-013, amending the City Code Title III, Chapter IV to permit issuance of a Class B liquor license to Coffee House Holdings, Inc., Starbucks at 1734 Sherman Avenue. This matter was moved for introduction and the rules were suspended and therefore I move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Alderman Wilson.
I do have some reservations on proceeding tonight. I don't even know where to start. Are we gonna start letting all coffee shops serve alcohol? I guess that's sort of the question. This seems to be a pretty big change for what we've got going on, so I'd feel more comfortable if we had a couple of weeks just to kind of think about this. I've heard from a couple of constituents about it already and, you know, right off the bat, I don't think I'm gonna have a significant problem with it. But I know that there's been some press and other constituents of mine have reached out, business constituents, that they are not able to sell, for example, wine shops can't sell wine by the glass, you know, why would coffee shops be able to serve beer and alcohol if wine shops can't serve alcohol? And, you know, these are questions I can't answer, so I'm not super comfortable, you know, with the suspension of the rules in proceeding tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
I thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a model that we've heard about for a long time, so I, we have had a little bit of time to think about it, but the folks from Starbucks are here tonight and I'd like them just to comment about why they were seeking suspension of the rules to move ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Alderman. My name is Harlan Powell. I'm one of the attorneys for Starbucks. I've had the pleasure of representing them here in Illinois for the last two years. With me tonight is a representative from Starbucks, Mr. Paul Crossco. We are here seeking approval for a retail license at the Sherman Avenue store. This is a situation where we're not looking to become a bar, we're not looking to become a tavern, we're not looking to do anything other than to extend, excuse me, the concept, the core concept of what Starbucks is into the evening hours. This is a situation where you have very well-trained staff. Every individual working at Starbucks will be Basset-trained. Every individual seeking an alcoholic beverage will be carded, will be limited to the product that, one, excuse me, one customer, one product at a time. This is not a situation where the sale of alcoholic beverages will supplant any other aspect of what the business is about. If there are any questions, obviously, we're here to respond to them as you see fit. And I apologize, I'm a little discombobulated this evening.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. You say this is a pilot program. Where has it been implemented thus far?
I can tell you, here in the state of Illinois, there have been several locations in the surrounding area, starting with Burr Ridge and also including Chicago. Chicago is actually a location that I think bears a good comparison to the location here in Evanston. The Chicago location was, I believe, six months ago, approximately. That's close to a college campus as well. We do understand that there's proximity issue here with Northwestern University. So first and foremost, the concern here for the company was training. It was imperative to make sure that the product that was being served, which by the way is limited to beer and wine only, this is not a spirits type of operation, we're talking about three or four local craft beers, maybe three or four wines by the glass as well. Training was key. So every individual, every associate that works for Starbucks, first and foremost, if they're gonna have any dealings whatsoever with the public in that capacity with regard to the sale and service of alcoholic beverages, the associates themselves have to be 21 years of age. Oh, excuse me. They also have to pass Basset certification. They also have to understand the zero tolerance policy that Starbucks has implemented with regard to their employment. Any violation of the Starbucks internal code of conduct results in the termination of their job. There are other markets where this concept has rolled out, I think, starting several years back. There's California, I believe, the home state in Washington.
Seattle.
Seattle.
And Atlanta.
Atlanta. And I can tell you, with regard to Illinois here, there has been zero issue with regard to this product, this class of product. There have been no violations, there have been no complaints, and in fact, the challenge that Starbucks has experienced with regard to this new pilot program has actually been to get the public to understand that this is even a new class of product that's being offered. This does not involve a complete reformulation or remodel of any existing store. It's basically just a single shelf with, as I said before, a very modest selection of beers and wines. To date, the data that has been made available thus far indicates that the sales of alcoholic beverage products at these locations that carry them range between 1% and 3%. Is that accurate? Really what they're looking to do here is to push the food concepts in the evening hours so that people who are going to a movie, people who are going to the theater, people who may be looking for a new and unique place to hold a book club, will go, they'll have a small plate of cheese, maybe some meats, a small sandwich, maybe dessert, maybe coffee, maybe tea, and then if they want it, they have that additional opportunity. As I said, we're not, we're not looking to become anything other than what we were at the beginning of the day, which is a coffee shop.
Alderman Braithwaite?
I just had a quick question. Would customers be able to buy alcohol without purchasing food in your store?
They would, but experience has shown that that is not typically the case. People go to Starbucks, they have a very defined sense of what they're looking for, and it is not to sit down and have three, four, or five beers. There are no TVs in Starbucks, as you're aware. There's no independent live entertainment. There's really not. There's really not the environment that is conducive to somebody deciding, "I would like to go have four cocktails, and Starbucks is the place I want to go do it at." That is more of a traditional bar setting, that's more of a traditional tavern setting, and as I said before, it bears repeating again, that's not what Starbucks is about. This really is, I believe internally, what the terminology has been. It's, they're seeking to create a third space. You're familiar with Starbucks, as it might appear to you in the morning or mid-morning hours when you're on your way to work, maybe you're having a mid-morning meeting there. Everybody understands what that's about. Maybe you're having lunch, maybe you're having an afternoon coffee. They're looking to essentially replicate that same environment in the evening hours. Now, I think it also bears noting that no store that has implemented or incorporated this line of goods has sought to increase their business hours, and the same would be true here. I'm not, does the store here close at 10:00?
Midnight.
Midnight. So the store here closes at midnight, we would not be seeking to extend those hours to 1:00 or later, obviously. It is the same footprint, it is the same hours, it's the same, everything you've come to know about Starbucks with just a very modest new line of products in addition to what's already there.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
You alluded to just the evening hour, so will it be posted that the wine and beer would only be served in the evening, and if so, beginning of what hour?
That is a good question. Where I have seen the product implemented, typically, there is signage posted saying that starting at approximately 2:00 p.m., beer and wine is available. I think that is, I don't know that there's a formal policy in place that says, "We will not, as a company, sell until such an hour." I think it's more a decision made by the market managers themselves based upon the traffic they see in the afternoon hours, but I wouldn't expect...
Yes, I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
Yeah. So I had the opportunity to open our very first store, which was actually in Schaumburg, and Burr Oak was a second one, where we've had it for a little bit more than a year now, and there's a number of stores in Chicago. And while we say no earlier than 2:00 p.m., our creative in signage, as we talk about the third place, to come in and enjoy a beverage alone or with a group, or in a meeting, is at 4:00 p.m., and we typically stop at 10:00 or 11:00, depending upon the operating hours of the store.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What does Starbucks call this concept? Does it have a formal name?
Starbucks Evenings.
Starbucks Evenings is the concept. This has already been vetted by our Liquor Commission, and it looks like it, Madam Liquor Commissioner, there was no objection by the Liquor Commission?
No.
And it was considered, and this, I assume it fits within our Class B liquor license neatly? Thank you.
Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. What, I'm sorry, I didn't have the materials that came with this. What is the extent of your wine list or beer list? I mean, actually, when I first read about this, I thought you were going to be making Irish coffee, but, so how many different types of wine and beers are you going to be serving?
We're looking at a very limited selection, and the specific selection is dictated largely by the local market. For example, I understand that there's a new brewery in the neighborhood, Temperance Beer Company. It's very likely that if granted the license, you would see a craft beer from Temperance. But in each instance, where possible, certainly, there's a local affiliation, there's a local connection, but you're talking higher-end craft beers, you're not talking about the mass-produced Anheuser-Busch Miller products, that sort of thing, coupled with three or four wines, all sold by the glass. As I mentioned previously, this is not a bottle-service situation. Every individual, every single customer who would be seeking that type of beverage would be required to present an ID before being served. They would not be able to order for their friends, for the table. This is the type of situation, actually, that in terms of customer contacts, it's envisioned that the barista, the employees that you're typically used to seeing behind the counter, will actually come out from behind the counter and actually interact service tables, check on service, check on consumption. In that way, not only engage with the customer on a one-on-one basis, but also monitor the situation to make sure that everything is done according to law.
And I think your new location is spectacular, it's really wonderful, and every time I've been in it, it's packed with Northwestern students. So I think you're, it isn't necessarily going to be the book groups, like I belong to, that are going to be going there, and I think you're going to have a challenge, given the prevalence of false IDs, that for you to successfully stay on the correct side of the law in terms of not serving minors. I mean, that would be my, that is my biggest concern, because the space is terrific, you see all the way, anytime, day or night, students are there studying. And I don't see as many folks as you do in other Starbucks that aren't so close to the university, sort of, that look like the rest of us in this room. So I think that that's going to be a significant challenge for you.
Well, and we do recognize that challenge, we recognize the fact that this store is in very close proximity to Northwestern. As I mentioned earlier, a store that has recently been licensed in the city of Chicago is not quite in the same proximity, but is very close to DePaul University. It has very much the same demographic, very much the same type of high traffic at all hours.
And what has their record been there?
Exemplary.
Long have they been open?
They've been licensed for, I believe, six months, give or take. But there was some substantial concern expressed initially by the local Alderman, because you had a high concentration of college students biking, walking to that location, studying at that location, and quite frankly, again, it's been a non-issue, because Starbucks does not provide that type of environment. The controls that they have in place have been very effective, both inside and out, because I should mention that this location has an outdoor patio, which is also licensed. So the concern was, will these kids be able to get beverages and then dash off down the street? That hasn't materialized, because again, this is a one-customer, one-product rule in place. These are served in actual glass, not paper cups, not packages that can be easily transported, and there is that contact, regular contact, between the customer and the employees at the store.
Thank you.
Thus far, it's been, it's been a very pleasant experience, I think, for everybody.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
I was going to ask if you were going to serve in paper cups.
No, ma'am.
But my other question is, and this is a broader, it is on, it's a broader question. If we do not ban the public smoking of, or whatever you call it, the e-cigarettes, would you allow, do you allow them in your store?
I'll pass. I don't know.
I don't have an answer to the, to the e-sticks, the vapor, or the vapor cigarettes, but any smoking, we follow the law.
But there, but I'm saying is, since there is no law, would you, you would then allow the use of an e-cigarette in your store, right?
There is no law for...
No law, preventing it.
Cigarettes?
No, no. The e...
The e-cigarette.
We had like a 10-hour discussion tonight.
I'm sorry.
Right, on those things, right. So, so you don't know.
I don't know the law on those, and we'll follow...
I'm telling you, there is no law preventing it. I'm telling you.
Okay.
Okay, because we make it, and we didn't, we didn't make it.
I think we need to find out from them what Starbucks' policy is across the country.
But this is a man who's opened several stores, and he's going to oversee the sale of liquor, and I just was wondering if he knew the answer, that's all, I'm not trying to trap anybody. Second thing, third thing is, for the mayor and members of the council, how do we distinguish a beer and wine license for Starbucks from a beer and wine license from, for example, Kurt's Cafe, or for example, the little coffee shop and bakery on Howard Street, or any other similar place? I mean, it's a type two. How do we, how do we distinguish going forward? I am, I have no problem issuing Starbucks because of their corporate, you know, oversight of liquor license for beer and wine, but I am wondering how we can apply equitably this license, or not apply it equitably, to other similar businesses?
Well, I keep being told that as Liquor Commissioner, I do have the right to refuse a license to anyone. Certainly Kurt's Cafe, which I think is a wonderful place, but I would never issue them a liquor license, because they have lots of kids working there who would not be my choice of people to serve.
I agree with you. I agree, but, and I understand that a liquor license is a privilege, not a right. So I understand that. I'm just thinking, though, that there's, there's an equity issue here, even though it isn't a right, and it is a privilege.
Then the bakery, even though it is on Howard Street in the Grade Eighth Ward, would be, it would seem to me, unlikely.
I've just, I just popped that into my head, I mean, there are other places, what about a McDonald's?
Well, that's a place with lots of young people, and I would certainly say no to that.
Starbucks has lots of young people. I'm just trying to figure this...
Older than McDonald's. Mr. Farrar, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
You're passing.
You're passing. Thanks a lot, you're always there for me.
Believe me, I'm not trying to cause trouble, I just, I just want to know...
These are good questions, Alderman Rainey.
How can we single them out for this?
No drive-through.
Okay, but, but what does Starbucks want? They want drive-throughs, so, you know, I mean, so what, we would never issue one to anything with a drive-through?
Well, the fact that this Starbucks is getting one does not mean that the next Starbucks would. It, I mean, you will back me up, I hope.
Definitely.
Attorney Farrar, that the Liquor Commission does have the right to say no.
We'll back you up. I mean, we've backed you up every single license you've brought to us.
I know, all the way through the tilted kilt.
I'll 10,000 of them.
Madam Mayor, members of the council grant for our Corporation Council, the mayor's indeed correct, the local control is preeminent relative to licensing. The one thing that did come up, and is before the council tonight, is amending the restaurant definition, because as it stands, coffee shops cannot have a license issued to them. So Alderman Rainey, you do raise an issue that is further deserving of some serious consideration, and it's a reminder to us all, as we go forward, this is indeed new ground. However, the mayor and the council do have the ability to condition licenses based upon the health, welfare, and safety of the population under generally accepted precepts of home rule.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, of course.
All right, so we understand that the Liquor Commissioner is totally responsible for accepting and recommending approval of a liquor license, but the council is the entity that makes the laws that allow for those licenses to be formatted, and so I'm just thinking that maybe we ought to think about this.
Well, you are correct that you are that entity. City Manager?
Yes, just to answer the question about the e-cigarettes, Starbucks banned e-cigarettes on June 1st.
Throughout the country?
All throughout North America.
All right, Alderman Holmes, I have no idea, Alderman Wilson, if you were ahead of her.
Guns, and...
I have guns, Alderman Tendem told me, so... You can't bring your gun, are you?
No, fantastic. Since this is a new concept, Starbucks Evening, then I think that in the future, any coffee shop that had that kind of maybe evening kind of presentation would consider, would come into consideration. I'm not saying that they would get it, but I'm buying into that, and that's all I'm buying into, but I'm buying into it at a different time, that I understand you don't have a corporate time, I think that's what I heard you say. You've been saying mainly around 2:00 p.m., but you, it really happens around 4:00. I'm thinking that it would be just a little bit later, and that it would really, then you could really define it as being evening. And since I believe we would, I would want to make that recommendation as an amendment, that if we're going to do this as an evening kind of concept, that I would really want to say 6:00, but I could just say even 5:00 o'clock, 5:00 is even more evening, and that would not be able to start serving until 5:00 p.m. Can I get a second on that amendment?
I'll second that.
All right, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Farrar, for pointing out the coffee shop change in the definition. I do think that this really, the way it's drafted, it's not, you know, specific to your individual request, but what we're doing here opens it up to basically all the coffee shops in the city. Ordinarily, we have a process, there's introduction, and then there's action later, and my understanding is you've requested suspension of the rules. In my mind, we will usually do that if there's some sort of extenuating circumstances, but I haven't heard any extenuating circumstances. Are there any...
Well, the reason we were requesting the waiver of the rules was simply because in the holiday season, it's one of the busiest times for most Starbucks, this one not accepted. The thought was that if we were able to implement this program, this evenings program, in a more timely fashion, it would allow the store personnel to be properly trained, to integrate the concept into the business in a more uniform fashion, where there wasn't the pressure of the holidays on all the associates. It's basically just a way for the program to be rolled out in a way that is, quite frankly, has the best chance of success, both from a business standpoint, but also from a compliance standpoint. I mean, we understand that this is a, it's a new concept for every city we've been to. Starbucks has a high profile. Starbucks does not want its reputation tarnished in any way, shape, or form, and the quickest way, I think, for that to happen would be to roll out this type of program in a college town, and to find it fall flat on its face, to find that there is an untrained employee, or somebody not clear on policy, or somebody not 100% certain on how to effectuate these types of transactions safely and legally, and to wind up with a violation. So our hope was to get this in place now, so that when the holiday season was in fact upon us, we would have a well-trained staff to deal with it.
All right, and I can appreciate those things. I guess, first of all, it wasn't on the agenda as an item that was likely to have the rules suspended, so I don't feel like I, and I don't know if people agree with me, I don't feel like I've had the opportunity to get feedback from either the business community or individuals on thoughts, and I, because this is a significant change to our general policy with regard to coffee shops, I'm not comfortable. I'd prefer just to go through the ordinary process and take it up for action at the next meeting.
I have a question, Alderman Rainey, did you suspend the rules when we passed the consent agenda, so you could hold it?
Right, and, well, I guess I expected, yeah, that would be the option. So I would move that we, sure.
I think you can't hold it, because it hasn't been moved for action yet. It's been introduced, the rules have been suspended, the next thing is, did, oh, I moved, I moved approval of it, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you could do that.
And you got a second, so...
No, go ahead, I mean, I, I'm struggling a bit with it, did you have a thought on it?
Alderman Rainey? Did you?
I was going to call the question.
Okay. I, I'm more comfortable holding, I move that we hold it to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
All right, we have to deal with the 5:00 p.m. amendment of Alderman...
It's been held, it's been held.
Okay, we don't have to, all right. All right.
So, Madam Mayor, so the...
So, Madam Mayor, so the, the outcome here is just as though it was introduced normally and be dealt with. But could you make, would you agree to make it a date certain at our next meeting? I mean, we're just going to, we're going to deal with it then.
Absolutely. And like I said, it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda, so ordinarily, if I knew it was going to be suspended, I would have done a bit more diligence prior to the meeting. But it was set for introduction, so...
Alderman Wen. Could you give us, send us by email the, the addresses of the other Starbucks evenings? You said there's one near DePaul. And if there are any other in the area, any others in the area, so that some of us might possibly go and take a look at them?
Sure. Certainly. Yes.
Closer than Burr Ridge, wherever that is.
Absolutely.
Burr Ridge is...
Alderman Rainey, we can field trip down to DePaul if you like.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there's one located in Schaumburg, Burr Ridge, at 1,000 West Diversey, 200 South Michigan, 600 North State, 948 North Rush, and 1,003 North Rush. So I'll, I'll email that to the council.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you. So we'll see you back in two weeks.
Thank you for your time.
All right, that concludes A and P W. And planning and develop, who's the chair of Human Services?
Me, I'm...
Oh, would, Planning and Development has an issue. Sorry. Didn't you take...
No, we only, what did Planning and Development have?
I'm, Mayor, I believe it was not removed. It was introduced.
It was introduced, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, Human Services. Alderman Holmes?
I move approval of the lakefront use special events policy.
Been moved and seconded to approve the lakefront special use policy. Alderman Wen? Oh, I'm sorry.
You want to speak to, I want to go ahead. I was just going to say, it had been requested that we hold this until the next meeting by the request of an Alderman.
All right.
Everybody hear that?
So it will be held.
The next is ordinance 80-0-13, amending the Title III, Chapter 14 of cigarettes and tobacco products to add restrictions for the use of electronic cigarettes and nicotine. Move approval.
Madam Mayor.
City manager?
Staff would ask that this be held as well. The ordinance that was included in your packet is incomplete. We would come back to you at your next meeting with a complete version of the ordinance.
All right. 8, oh, 86, ordinance, no, we're going to hold, we're going to hold that as well. Ordinance 105-0, I mean, -0-13, binding referendum for the dissolution of the Evanston Township. Move approval. Okay, we would also want to hold this until the next, well, I won't say until the next week, we want to hold this, but we'd also like to make a request that the city manager provide us with an outline of, of response to the letter that we all received from the legal and voters in terms of an outline of a plan for the township.
Alderman Rainey?
Does the hold seconded?
I'll second.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make, as, with the liquor license, I would like this to be a date certain at our next meeting. And then could the city attorney tell us what the deadline is for placing referendum on the ballot?
End of December. End of December.
End of December, I'm told.
End of December. I think, I think I remember that.
Mr. Farrar, is that correct?
Grant for our corporation counsel. Under the election code, the deadline for the Cook County Clerk to certify would be on or about January 9, 2014. However, the problem is, is the official election calendar hasn't been published yet. So that's the one issue there.
Right, but we don't want to hold it that long. We just would like to be able to get a response.
But I'm just thinking of some of the other things lately that we've been holding and holding for good reason, but this, this has a deadline. So just to keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
And Alderman Wilson, I believe, wanted to work on the language as well.
Okay, that completes the report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Economic development.
You did it all.
It's all finished. It's just the rules committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it 02 or 03?
03.
03. I'd like to move Resolution 49-013, proposed revisions for city council rules. Rules Committee and staff recommend approval for proposed revisions to council rules effective November 1st, and it's up for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, when we discussed this at our last meeting, my motion, I thought, was to begin the Administration and Public Works Committee at 6:00, as opposed to quarter to 6:00. And to begin the Planning and Development Meeting at 7:15. And staff said that, and I don't have it open in front of me right now, staff said, no, that we agreed to have Planning and Development start at 7:00. And my argument is, even if we get over at 7:00, we need a few minutes to recoup those of us on both committees. So I, I don't have that in front of me, but Marty Lyons said, he counseled that the ordinance said 7:15 for P, or 7:00. All I want to do is make sure 7:15 for P and D start time. That's all. Don't make a big deal out of it. So I move that amendment if it's not already in the ordinance.
I second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to start P and D at 7:15. Any, no discussing, no lights on for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It is 7:15.
So we should move the, move the rules. Yep, move the whole thing.
All right. What? Alderman Braithwaite moved, moved it, and it's been seconded to approve it, but could you do it as amended?
All right.
Thank you.
Item 03, just read it over again, as amended. Rules Committee and staff recommended approval for proposed provisions to council rules effective November 1st. For Alderman Rainey, I think email to you to start at 6:00 p.m. and P and D to start at 7:15.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Move adjourned.
Call the wards.
And we are at call of the wards. Alderman Wen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to offer my condolences to the Lang family on their double loss. I am very sorry to hear their news. And my condolences to them. Second, there will be a meeting about the Maine and Chicago corner this coming Thursday, October 17th, at Lincoln School at 7:00 p.m. to discuss the new developments that are involved with that, with that corner. At Maine and Chicago, the meeting will be at Lincoln School, which is on Forest Avenue, at 7:00 p.m. We hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I just want to announce that we'll be having a fourth ward meeting on November 6th at the McGaw YMCA on Grove at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Yes, I'd like to announce that the fifth ward meeting will be held this Thursday, October 17th at 7:00 p.m. at Fleetwood. And we'd like you all to come and join us if you're not doing anything else on a Thursday evening. And I also want to just say, congratulations, Mayor, about the flowers for Wanda, because, you know, sometimes we just don't give people flowers while they can still smell them. And I think that that is such a wonderful, wonderful thing, because you're such a quiet spirit that people don't realize. Some of the things that you did way before you came to Evanston City Council, and I think that Wanda just reminded me a lot. I thought a lot about Mothers Against Gangs and all the high school parties and the things that we did way back in the day. And it, she was absolutely right to do that, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to announce a sixth ward meeting on October 24th, that's a Thursday, at 7:00 p.m. at Three Crown Center, 2323 McDaniel. We'll be meeting, as usual, in the first-floor community room. This meeting is designed to be a discussion of a certain topic, which will be Parks and Rec. And along with me, Dan Stein, who is the sixth ward resident, but also the chair of the Parks and Rec Board, will be there to help facilitate and have a good discussion about our Parks and Recs and the future of, of those, Parks and Recs. The future, going forward, with the different plans proposed and subjects like Robert Crowe and that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seventh ward meeting on Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 in the Ecology Center. There's only one number you need to remember for this meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Congratulations, Madam Mayor, on your flowers.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke with my alderman in the fourth ward a little bit earlier this evening and just wanted to report that it's a small community on, on our block of Davis Street, which is the 1000 block of Davis Street. And one of the technicians at Technicolor Nails, Cindy, unfortunately has contracted breast cancer, and she's the mother of a nine-year-old and a six-month-old. And the business is having a raffle for her on October 19th. That will be there all day, and all the money raised will go to help support Cindy in for breast cancer awareness. So please come and help out that day if you are so inclined.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, congratulations again for your flowers. I remember, I think, 20 years ago, when I was working with you, working with you when you were a member of the school board, and so you still continue to do wonderful things. Also, congratulations to Alderman Rainey, who has recognized at the St. Francis Community Care's Award. I regret that I was unable to attend, but I heard it was a wonderful affair. To all the residents of the second ward, I've received a number of emails and phone calls regarding the closing of Dominix. And so I'd like to thank our city staff, who is on top of this. It's something that we all care about. And as soon as I know more, we know more, the residents will know more. So our next scheduled second ward meeting is the second Thursday in November. And if we hear anything sooner, I'll, I'll call a meeting. But as disappointed as I am, I think this is something that we all predicted. And maybe it'll be an opportunity to bring someone else who cares more about the community responsive. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, oh, and before Alderman Wilson makes a motion, I did forget to say, Alderman Rainey made the most dynamite speech accepting the award. It was absolutely terrific. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and minutes. I also move that the city council, sitting as the co-terminist Town Board of Evanston, convene into executive session to discuss an agenda item regarding personnel. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C11, and C21.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. City clerk, would you call her all?
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Nine to zero.